Good evening, everyone, and thank you, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for December 9th, 2024. Let the record reflect, meeting starting at 6:30 PM. I appreciate all councilors being here this evening with the storm outside. So with that, we have presented a revised agenda, and I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules in order of business, to change the order of our agenda items this evening.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by Counselor Hatch.
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or questions on the changes? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules in order of business passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Hoping that we can get everybody home safe this evening. Okay, I would like to make note the recognition of all council members present this evening, including our city administrator, John Behanko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, that now takes us to item number four this evening, and that is committee correspondence to council. Are there any councilors wishing to provide an update? Okay, not seeing any. We now move on to item five this evening, and that is a special recognition of our state representative, Marshall Archer, who is our former Saco City Councilor, Ward One. I want to welcome our newly elected state representative to District 129 and former Ward One City Councilor, Marshall Archer. Marshall was the Ward One Councilor for seven years, from 2017 to 2024, and he was a strong advocate for not only his residents in Ward One, but for the entire city of Saco as a whole. He has a long family history in Saco and does everything he can in his power to work towards the betterment of our community. On behalf of the Saco City Council, we want to thank you and present you with a gift showing our appreciation and our thanks. Although you will no longer be sitting up here with us, you are still working for our community and its residents, and we wish you the best of luck in Augusta.
So do I have to say Marshall Archer, 125, or one week out, way is Saco Maine? Or is that only for that section? I am new on this side. I'm a rookie. All right.
Good evening, Mayor McPhail, councilors, and city administrator, Behanko. I want to begin by thanking everyone for the kind sentiments shared with me as my seven years on this council has come to an end. I want to offer my sincerest apologies to this council and the people of Saco for not being able to attend the swearing-in of our new council last Monday. My pre-legislative duties as an incoming member of the House of Representatives required my presence in Augusta. While I'm deeply wished to be present, especially to see my neighbor and my friend, Counselor Edwards, sworn in, is my greatest regret is that my absence deprived the public of witnessing a peaceful transfer of power that exemplifies our democratic values. As elected officials, we should always strive to lead by example. To the councilors and the school board members who swore in last Monday, I extend my heartfelt congratulations. Your dedication to serving our community inspires confidence in Saco's future, and I look forward to the great work you will accomplish together. As of December 4th, I was sworn in to state representative for District 129 encompassing the city of Saco. I've already begun to work with my staff to draft legislation that reflects values that I hold dear and addresses the needs of our community. Some initiatives that are currently in development include a bill to identify and rename a bridge that connects the city of Saco and Biddeford as the General Wallace H. Nutting Memorial Bridge honoring a significant figure in our shared history, who is a general that is up there. A proposed formula change to the Department of Education's EPS model to include a weighted value for residents, students that are homeless, ensuring equitable support for vulnerable populations. Continued support for Representative Copeland and Senator Bailey's bill to solidify the state's role as a non-federal sponsor for this Camp Ellis-Jeddy project, collaborating with the Army Corps of Engineers and the city, to see this vital project to its completion. An advocacy to revisit and amend the property tax stabilization law to enhance senior tax assistance, ensuring older maeners can afford to stay in their homes and remain integral members of our community. These are just few examples of the work that has already begun, my legislative efforts. We'll remain deeply focused on priorities that benefit Saco and our residents. To the mayor, city council, and city administrator, Behoko, while my role as Ward One councillor has concluded, my representation of Saco has expanded. As your new state representative, I have remained committed to serving this city. Please do not hesitate to reach out if there are any needs, concerns, or opportunities where the state's role can assist our constitution and advance Saco's interest. Thank you again for the trust and support you all have given me over the past seven years. It has been an honor to serve, and I look forward to continuing to advocate for this city in Augusta. Thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward to inviting you back with Senator Bailey and Representative Kotlan for updates.
And I will be here. Thank you.
Best of luck, Marshall. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, that moves us on to item number six this evening, and that is public comment. If you wish to address the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
I'm David Plavon. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm the vice president of Save Our Shore Saco Bay. I'm also the chairman of the Saco Shoreline Commission. I just wanted to briefly get in front of you to ask you for your support, for the city administrator to sign the memorandum of agreement with your county for the coastal resilience program. This is something that we desperately need. It's, I've been working with the county, and we'll continue to work with the county. I know our city administrator has been working with the county also, and Saco can only benefit from this and build upon, to build its own beach management plant on top of it. So I ask that you approve it, and that we also, at some point in coming meetings, bring forth the local beach management plan, which we started out back in June, but was put on hold for this. But I think the county has done enough work now that the city should be able to determine what it needs to do on its own. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to address council?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I am commenting only on the revised agenda for this evening. Thank you, mayor, city administrator, council, and the public for the recognition of State Representative Marshall Archer, District 129. I'm going to be a mom. I'm going to gush. So as his mother, I have to take a moment to gush for the Saco record, as I watched Marshall being sworn in in Augusta chambers last Wednesday. And sharing this moment with his wife, Alexa, and daughters, Sadie and Kinley. It was a very proud moment in my life, and reminiscent of some proud familial moments in my youth, when his uncle, when his uncle, Bill Cohen, the former United States Secretary of Defense, U.S. Senator and U.S. Representative, a former banker, mayor, and councilman, and a former college instructor, created and designed his path in life. It was amazing for me to be a participant and watch his growth. It seems like deja vu all over again. Representative Archer, you have fulfilled the college instructor, councilman, and deputy mayor, now state representative. Where are you going? I can't keep up. I am very excited to see where your path will lead you and your family. I look forward to your initiatives to help the city of Saco, your district, and the state of Maine. You did this once back in 2009-ish, being a force behind the complimentary lifetime veteran access to Maine State Parks. Congratulations, son. I'm commenting on the deputy mayor of the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Johnson, for requesting an Australian vote for tonight, as I too am uncomfortable with the usual process of councilors appointing other councilors. Yes, respectfully, I can view a deputy mayor as a placeholder, sorry, or a resume builder, sorry, Marsh. I've really thought deep about what deputy mayor truly is or could be. If something were to happen to our mayor, heaven forbid, heaven forbid, for a longer period of time instead of for an evening, I truly believe during this critical transition of staffing, many have retired or accepted new positions elsewhere, along with the citizen grievances being addressed at this time. The councillor who has the longest institutional, historical knowledge, and experience, 13 years, should be approved as the 2025 deputy mayor, in my opinion, and that of others. I recommend that you consider, the councilors who are voting, that you consider Counselor Johnson for this position. And I want to thank Counselor Berman, as I did, coming up, for his email to me today. As I said, if I knew what you know, I would definitely totally agree. I happen to know different, but I definitely appreciate your communication to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, if there is anyone else wishing to approach, speak to council, please step forward. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. We move on to item number seven this evening, and that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes dated November 18th, 2024?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. And we'll start down at this end. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
And Counselor Edwards?
Abstain.
Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Okay, we now move on to item eight this evening, and that is consent items. There are three items on the agenda, and that is item A is an application for a solid waste permit of Dion's Property Maintenance and Landscaping. Item B is the application for a license to operate Games of Chance for the Biddeford-Saco Elks Lodge 1597. And item C is the council schedule for January through June of 2025. Is there a motion to accept the consent items?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman?
Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Edwards. Got to get used to your voice now. Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments on the consent items? Okay, roll call vote. Again, we'll start down on to my left. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
And Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that now takes us to item nine this evening, and that is our action items. First item this evening is item A, and that is for the election of deputy mayor. Is there a motion to untable?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Okay, motion on the floor to untable the deputy mayor. And we'll start down to my right. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to up table, untable passes seven zero. Okay, next off, is there a motion to suspend the rules in order so that we can allow for an Australian ballot policy this evening?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks. Any questions regarding the process? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt? And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Next up for the process, is there any councillor who wish to be nominated, or any councillor wishing to nominate a current councillor? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I wish to nominate Counselor Joe Gunn for the position of deputy mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? You can nominate yourself, or you can have a representative nominate you. Counselor Hatch?
I would like to nominate myself, please.
Okay. And anyone else? Okay, not seeing any interested parties. So we have the two nominees this evening, which would be Counselor Gunn and Counselor Hatch. You have slips of paper in front of you. Would you please write your choice down, fold your paper in half, and city administrator Behanko will collect the ballots. Thank you. And as noted with this process, the first councillor to receive four votes... Okay. Counselor Berman, you have the commentary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if it pleases you, I'd like to read the background, just for the record.
Yep.
Article two, section 2.05, election and term, subsection C of the Charter states, "The city council shall elect from its membership a deputy mayor who shall exercise all powers of the mayor during temporary absence or disability of the mayor. In the event of a vacancy in the office of mayor, the deputy mayor shall assume the office of mayor with all the duties and obligations of that office in accordance with the provisions of section 2.06(c)(1). At the December 2nd, 2024 city council meeting, the mayor suggested to hold the election of the deputy mayor by Australian ballot. Council should suspend its rules and orders for this change. We have done so. Therefore, be it ordered that the city council move to elect Counselor Joe Gunn as deputy mayor of the city of Saco for the term of one year commencing December 2nd, 2024. I move to approve the order."
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, and Counselor Gunn has received the majority of the votes. We do not need to do the roll call, as we have suspended the normal order, and it was already tallied by ballot. Congratulations, Joe. Look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This is a real honor. Thank you.
Okay, so that moving on to item B this evening, that is one reading, and this is the Biddeford-Saco Memorial Bridge, bridge number 32, I'm sorry, 3423, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Saco, in joint agreement with the city of Biddeford, wishes to rename the Biddeford-Saco Memorial Bridge, bridge number 3423, as the General Wallace H. Nutting Veterans Memorial Bridge, in recognition of General Nutting and all veterans. Whereas, the city of Saco recognizes the importance of honoring and preserving the legacy of those who have served in the armed forces of the United States, particularly individuals with strong ties to our community. Whereas, General Wallace H. Nutting is a distinguished veteran of the United States Army, has made significant contributions to our nation through this exemplary military service, leadership, and dedication to public service. Whereas, General Nutting's legacy serves as a source of pride and inspiration for the citizens of Saco, reflecting the values of honor, sacrifice, and commitment to his community that are deeply cherished by the city and its residents. Whereas, General Nutting grew up in Saco, attended Thornton Academy, and later served as mayor of Biddeford from 2003 to 2007, fostering a profound connection to the Biddeford-Saco area and exemplifying the shared history and values of our two communities. Whereas, the city of, the Saco City Council has carefully considered the proposal to rename the Biddeford-Saco Memorial Bridge, bridge numbered 3423, in recognition of General Nutting's contributions and as a tribute to the broader sacrifices of all veterans. Whereas, renaming bridge number 3423 as General Wallace H. Nutting Veterans Memorial Bridge will symbolize the enduring bond between Biddeford and Saco while honoring General Nutting's legacies and all who have served. Now, therefore, be it resolved that bridge number 3423 shall be officially renamed the General Wallace H. Nutting Veterans Memorial Bridge. Signage shall be installed at the bridge to honor General Nutting's and inform the public of the bridge's significance. The city of Saco shall organize a formal dedication ceremony, ceremony to commence the renaming and to recognize the contributions of veterans in our community, adopted by the city council of Saco on this ninth day of December 2024. I move to approve the resolution.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'd just say, you know, recognizing General Nutting is somewhat long overdue, in my opinion. So I've been honored to bring this forward, and certainly have appreciated everybody on both sides, you know, on that side of the river and, you know, locally here. I have, you know, my own experiences with General Nutting, you know, but I appreciate
I have, you know, my own experiences with General Nutting, you know, but I appreciate his service to the nation, as well as serving as our sister city's mayor, Bitterford. His term overlapped with my father's service to the city of Saco as mayor, or several of his terms. And though personality-wise they're vastly different, I think they build pretty good rapport with each other that benefited, you know, both our communities. You know, and additionally, he's been involved with probably two numerous nonprofits and the church down the street here for many years. So, yeah, I'm just happy to recognize him. From a personal perspective, I'll say that General Nutting was probably one of the small handful of people that, when I returned home from combat in Iraq, had personally reached out to me. Initially, you know, we had marched in a parade together. I was rather taken aback how much interest he showed in me, being that he was a general and I was just, at that time, a non-commissioned officer. It was, I mean, obviously, like you said, my father knew him, I didn't really know him very well, but it continued on from that point, which for me was remarkable. I would often see him at the old Skipper's Restaurant on Sundays, and for a decent period, he would come over to me or ask me to sit with him and just check in on me. So, again, I'm just honored to honor him. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to note that, as Representative Archer stated in his thank you to us, this will be going forth with Representative Mallon from Bitterford. Bitterford will be doing a similar resolution. We need the joint agreement between the two cities, and then it will be going to the legislature for January. Okay, so a motion is on the table, roll call vote. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that now takes us down to item F, which was formerly item F, which is now item C, and that is one reading for the fiscal year 2025 budget wage line increase for the elected official stipend, and that is councillor Berman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This moves an additional pay increase from the use of fund balance to base pay lines for elected officials. The pay increase was voted on and passed during the November 5th, 2024 election. Be it ordered that city council approves fiscal year 2025 wage line increases for elected official stipend, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by councillor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Hatch. Any discussion or comments on the item? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. So, I had sent, you know, information to council earlier this afternoon, and while there's no requirement that we have multiple readings for a budget amendment, historically speaking, we've always followed a two-meeting process. So I would just amend the motion to include, between approves and FY '25, add the first reading of, and then following stipend, and to schedule the second and final reading for, I'll say, 12/17, if that's our next meeting.
Sixteenth?
12/16, then.
Okay, thank you. So there is an amendment on the table to change this to a first reading with a second and final on December 16th.
I'll second that.
Okay, second on the amendment by councillor Hatch. Any discussion or comments on the amendment? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment only. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now it takes us back to the main motion. Roll call vote on the main motion. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mayor? City administrator Bohenko? Yeah, I don't have any problem with what was suggested by councillor Johnston. What I would ask, though, if somebody could bring forward for the rules and order, that we make that or memorialize that, so, you know, because it hasn't been memorialized anywhere. So if somebody comes forward and just puts that as a part of our rules and order for next week, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that now moves us to item G, which is now item D this evening, and that is one reading for the fiscal year 2025 budget for the wage line increase for the fire union, and that is councillor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The current collective bargaining agreement between the city of Saco and the Saco Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 2300, is set to expire on June 30th, 2025. The city and IAFF Local 2300 have reached a tentative agreement to extend the terms of the existing contract to June 30th, 2026, with a focus on Appendix A and ensuring wages for firefighter EMS providers are competitive based on market data for the position. At the last city council meeting in November 2024, the city council provided a report from executive session, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an extension of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Saco and the Saco Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 2300, for a term concluding on June 30th, 2026, contingent upon funding availability and a budget transfer occurring to make those funds available before the proposed wage adjustments take effect on March 30th, 2025. Be it ordered that city council approve the fiscal year 2025 wage line increase for fire union employees as reflected in Exhibit 1, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by councillor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Edwards. Any discussion on the item? Councillor Johnston?
Ditto to the last one, I would make that same motion, just to push just the next.
Yep, to amend, to change to first reading, with second and final on the 16th.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Amendment made by councillor Johnston, with a second by councillor Hatch. Any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Berman?
I just want to just inquire as to pushing this off to next meeting won't delay the onset of this change in pay at all for the firefighters. I wouldn't want that to happen.
Your Honor, this would not, because the pay will be adjusted in April.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote on the amendment. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion to the amendment passes seven zero. Back to the main motion, roll call vote. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Main motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, that now moves us on to item, formerly item H, which is now item E, and that is one reading for the memorandum of understanding for the coastal resilience, and that is councillor Berman.
Madam Mayor, I think this is more motions than I've read the rest of the year combined. Greg Zinzer, York County manager, indicated York County would like to create a York County Coastal Coalition for York County communities regarding coastal resiliency, with York County becoming the service provider on behalf of the communities. In order to proceed, York County would like to have a memorandum of understanding with each city and town that intends to work with them on this matter. City administrator Bohenko requested the city council vote to authorize him to enter into this memorandum of understanding. The city council hereby authorizes city administrator John Bohenko to sign and enter into the memorandum of understanding between the county of York and the city of Saco regarding the creation of a York County Coastal Coalition on behalf of the city of Saco.
Thank you. Motion has been made by councillor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Johnston. Any discussion or question on the item? Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we can all acknowledge that the rising sea levels and changing coastal storms as a result of climate change are a regional, and indeed statewide, not a town problem, although up until now, we've been dealing with it in a city-by-city or town-by-town manner, which really prohibits creating a collective response to these changes and creates a piecemeal approach, which we know is less effective, both in terms of its efficiency, but also prohibits us from creating an economy of scale. So I've really been pleased that York County is really stepping up its efforts to coordinate a regional approach in terms of the dredge, the beach management plan, and now this memorandum of understanding. I think this is an incredible step forward in creating a comprehensive, regional, and economically viable plan. It will also free up municipal resources in this planning and put them on the county level, while keeping our voice and seat at the table, ensuring that Saco's needs are well represented, and doesn't preclude the city from engaging in additional work, indeed that's specifically mentioned in a memorandum of understanding. So frees us to do the work that we need to do to protect ourselves. So I think this is an incredible step forward, and I'm really pleased it's proceeding in this manner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, I'm in agreement with councillor Berman. I did tell Mr. Roach that I would keep my comments brief this evening. So I just would like to say that this is a monumental step in a positive direction. You know, throughout the years, we've had several collaborative groups of, you know, Saco Bay communities. I think there were good things that have come out of those since probably 2000, but oftentimes, you know, there wasn't a clear understanding of who was going to take the lead, and they would meet infrequently, and then initiatives would kind of fall by the wayside. So, you know, getting to this point, unfortunately, it really kind of took the last winter's storms to kind of open up our neighbors' eyes to the realities that we're faced with. But, you know, for anybody that's listened to me on the issue of Camp Ellis, yes, particularly having a larger coalition has been like front and fore center for me. I just, I mean, obviously Camp Ellis is our issue, but obviously, you know, climate change and erosion is all of Southern Maine's issue, and having us all as a larger group be able to attack the problem will get farther than we ever will, you know, as we've seen over the years. It's Saco been going it alone, so wholeheartedly support, and really, it's an impressive, to everybody that's involved, I haven't really been involved at all, but at the county level, it's impressive to see how fast, you know, they've moved forward with recognizing, yeah, maybe this is more of a county-led initiative than just individual communities. So thank you to York County, you know, members involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
And councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that concludes our consent items this evening. Now I now move on to former item 11, which is now item 10, and that is an administrative update. City administrator Bohenko?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Do have one more item. Formerly item I, which is now item F, is the certification of election results, state general and referendum election, and municipal general and referendum election for November 5th, 2024, and that is councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On November 5th, 2024, a state general and referendum election and municipal general and referendum election was held. The election results are being submitted to council for certification as required by section 7.03b of the Charter of the city of Saco. Be it ordered that the city council hereby approves the results of November 5th, 2024 state general referendum election and municipal general and referendum election as presented, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by councillor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Edwards. Any discussion or questions on the item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Start down to my right, councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now moving on to former item 11, which is now item 10, and that is administrative update.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first one is on the Parade of Lights, this Saturday, December 14th. There will be the Holiday Festival and Parade of Lights. There will be activities throughout the day, including storytime with Santa here at City Hall on the first floor, the Festival of Trees at the Dyer Library, and caroling along Main Street from coastal carol, to name a few. The highlight of the evening will be the Parade of Lights kicking off at 6:00 PM. This will be a parade with numerous floats and performers bringing the holiday spirit to life right here in downtown Saco. This event wouldn't be possible without the support of all city departments. Saco Main Street extends their gratitude to the Saco Police, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Facilities, Fire, Communications for helping to make this parade safe and enjoyable for the community. We all hope everybody will come out and have a good time at the parade on the 14th. The other item that I wanted to report on tonight is, today I received a letter from city attorney Tim Murphy advising of his retirement as of January 2nd, 2025. I will be moving forward to look for a replacement. Will be accepting letters of interest and interviewing for the position, and with time permitting, put out an RFP. So I just wanted to make sure the council knew of that, and wish attorney Murphy well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, I would like to note that exciting news that the Festival of Lights Parade, my understanding and last information was we are up over 100 floats, which brings us not quite close, but pretty close to pre-pandemic numbers, so it's going to be a wonderful event, really excited. And I would like to personally thank everybody that came out to the tree lighting last Friday at the transportation center, myself and Justin the Elf, Shanette. He emceed and led, we had the Saco Middle School Choir singing Christmas carols, all organized by Saco Main Street. Okay, so that now takes us to item, former item 15, which is now item 12, and that is an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Johnston? Roll call vote. Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
No.
Somebody's always got to do it to me. Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. All right, thank you, everyone, and please get home safe.